Good evening and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. I would like to thank all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. I would also like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Mr. Moore and Ms. Flowers. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Dr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Ifker?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Vice President Vera?
Here.
President Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, Averyan notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle, and by email to the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Next, in consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Ifker. Any comments? Hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Moore, it is time for your report, which please share your superintendent's report with us.
Thank you, President Rock. Sorry about that. Tonight, I can report our summer programs have been operating smoothly and successfully. Our extended school year program, E S Y, which is conducted by our Special Service Department, has been going very well. And we had our summer enrichment program, which had an increase in enrollment, which was very successful this year. In the upcoming weeks, our athletic camps begin on campus and our academic camps begin for our engineering and tech students. The district operates during the summer not quite as fully as it does during the school year, but the summertime is very, very busy. I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you for the combined efforts of our staff and administration to make this a successful summer thus far. Ladies and gentlemen, I would also like to take a moment to mention Dr. Pons, Jonathan Pons. I'd like to take a moment to mention the passing of a colleague, the Superintendent of Montclair Public Schools, Dr. Jonathan Pons, who died suddenly. I was able to attend Friday's tribute to Dr. Pons and extend our collective sympathy here at West Orange. Our West Orange sends sincere condolences to the Montclair Board of Ed, the Montclair community, the Montclair Administration, their faculty, staff, and students, and of course, to the family of Dr. Pons. This is a tremendous loss for our neighbors in Montclair, and we are here to support them in their sorrow. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate that. And now for our bullying report. Since June's Board of Ed meeting, we've had four HIV investigation. We've reviewed and summarized all investigations, and all four incidents have been determined unfounded. Thank you, President Rock, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. Next up, we have committee reports or comments from the board. Strifker?
Just briefly, I wanted to mention Principal Guerrero, Board of Education President, Mr. Rock, and of course Superintendent Hayden Moore, and commend you on just another wonderful graduation. High school graduation was, I mean, it was spiritual, it was fun, it was brief, it was everything you want in a ceremony, and it was really a tribute to the community and to the graduates and their parents and teachers. So just want to say, well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Stevenson?
No.
Vice President Vera?
Good afternoon, everyone. On last week, it's going to be a week ago, I had the opportunity to be invited to the award ceremony for the financial literacy program. It was two minutes. It was two minutes, but I feel really, you know, it was amazing. The program that I was listening and researching, it was a really good program, and I feel really happy and proud to be there to represent myself as a teacher and a board member. Thank you for the invitation, and you know, I think it's a really good experience for me to be there.
Anything, Dr. Bryant? Thank you. All right, then I'll move on to my board president's report. And this evening, we're going to have a short presentation from Maritza Brown, who's in the audience. She is the founding president and chairperson of the Circle of Rainbow Sisters Seeking Spiritual and Wellness Connection, an organization that offers a financial literacy program to students throughout the area, including some of our students here in West Orange. She is here to share some more information about her service to our community. So you can take the podium.
Good evening. Mike? Oh, so that was me. See, I always think that my voice carries. So, once again, good evening. My name is Maritza Brown, and I actually brought two parents with me and one student. So I'm actually grateful. So I stand here in grace and grateful to actually, believe it or not, we started this program, and I'm not going to read through the package. The deck is intended to give you a highlight, and I will present the elevator spiel on what you have in front of you. Is that reasonable? I have ten minutes? Okay. So, we started this program back in two thousand and seventeen, and at that time Superintendent Moore was the principal of West Orange High School. And then Superintendent Rutske, we presented the program to him, and the first thing he did was pass the baton to Principal Moore at the time, now Superintendent, and Principal Moore Superintendent assigned the delegation to Nancy Mullins. We honored her that year. But the passion behind this program is about equipping our students for the future. Just a trivia question for the board. What do you think the percent of our population living paycheck to paychecks? Anyone? Take a guess?
Ninety.
Living paycheck to paycheck? Oh, my goodness.
Thirty percent.
No, it's almost approximately fifty percent, sometimes depending on the economics it waivers. So our goal... So, statistics, recorded income, fifty percent. Our goal is to ensure that our students, like Cherie Musa here, when she exits college, one, we're contributing to her debt reduction, and she will not be part of that population. She's learned, she's been in our program since two thousand and seventeen, and she just graduated. She was amongst one of our scholarship winners. So was Olivia Raymond, her mom is here as well, and let's not ignore Cherie Musa's mom. And the reason I reached out to some of the parents, most of whom were working, so they couldn't attend. So the success of our program is twofold. It's the engagement of the schools and the parents. Most of our students, I'd say eighty percent of our students that have succeeded through the program, rest on the shoulders of the parents. Now, what you have in front of you is a ton of highlights of our program. And as you can see, to date, we've awarded over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So those awards is allocated across the early program, which is early disciplines for the students, first graders through high school seniors. The second program is our scholarship program. On inception, we restricted the applicants for the senior and junior scholarships. We had external students apply. And why? Because we started with sixth graders and fifth graders, so we didn't have any high school juniors and seniors. But we wanted to test the methodology and the model. So now that Cherie was in her junior year last year, we restricted all applicants for our scholarship to our students that went through the Early Development Program, the Financial Discipline Award Program. Our strategic vision is to continue to partner with the school districts so that the schools are nominating the students. And what's included in the deck is our disciplines and the characteristics that we look for in the students that are nominated to represent the municipality. I have to mention Roosevelt Middle School, where actually Cherie was nominated to represent Roosevelt Middle School by Mr. Hush. Mr. Hush has been an impeccable advocate for the program. There's been a video, the school was interviewed by NBC, I don't know Superintendent Moore, if you saw that, but they were interviewed and the organization that was named in the program that we've partnered with them was this organization. The challenges are engaging and expanding the connection with those in the community, the education leaders, to nominate those students that they believe fit our discipline and our characteristics for the students, because it paves the road for success for our students. Cherie Musa graduated this year, and she's one of our FRASA winners. How much did you win? And last year? So in total, twenty-five hundred is reserved, it's been escrowed, and when she's ready for those funds to be mailed to her school, we will distribute it to our schools. Come on up here, please. Parents, both parents. So we were fortunate to have presented to Roosevelt Middle School back in two thousand and sixteen in December, and Cherie Raymond was one of the parents at the PTA meeting. And we presented to that group, and she immediately engaged. And?
I'm still here.
So Cherie has two kids who registered and participated in the program from day one. She hardly ever missed any of the workshops, so much so that I've engaged her to help us at the workshops. But the great news is both her students, both of the students, Kai Raymond and Olivia Raymond, applied for our scholarships, and Kai is now in his sophomore year. He's a rising junior, and he applied for our FRASA scholarship, and he won first place. Now let's fast forward. He won junior scholarship, and then he won first place as a senior. His total takeaway was how much? Five thousand? Yes, but that includes what he earned from the Early Development Program, which is our workshop, where we teach students how to trade on the stock market with what are needs and wants, how to do budgeting, insurance, the different types of insurance, the different types of taxes. So our elementary, middle, and high school students, should you pass them and you know them and you ask them if they attended this program, ask them any of those questions. Rule of seventy-two, anyone on the panel knows what that is? Rule of seventy-two?
To do with the interest.
And how many years it takes for your funds to double based on the rate that you're earning. Our students know that. I expect them to. Maybe disappointed because we each have memory laps, right? Okay. So anyway, what I wanted to impress and continue to get support from our superintendent is how do we engage our school leaders, and I call those principals, and you know, Ms. Vera, you've made it real clear, that our counselors, to nominate students to represent West Orange. Because historically, I've done those visits to the school, to the churches, and that's how we've engaged students. But past two years, we've restricted it to the municipality nominating the students to represent you, to represent this school, to represent this municipality. Our mayor has been engaged from the inception. Prior Board President, Sandra Mordecai. I have five minutes left? For all of us, but you have something we need you to speak to. Hence the mom, because it's critical. You were? Okay, fine. So now you're distracting from the time. So, anyway, I am here to just make sure that I influence the engagement. Superintendent Moore, so that we can meet maybe quarterly to see how the other principals are pressing, because Joel Castillo and Lionel Hush have set the foundation. They are great models, and so I'm hoping that we could enhance this process to move it forward. Now, leverage this organization to do a few things, which Ms. Cherie Raymond will speak to. So she's anxious, even though both her kids are out of the system, she really wants to influence more communication on academic awards. Okay, so I'm going to give you two minutes. But any questions at all? Hold it till the end, please, and just let us know how best we can further engage West Orange. Okay?
Hi. Well, you know, I was out of the school, and then last week, my two-year-old nephew moved into the St. Cloud neighborhood because they love the school system so much. So you'll see me sometime still. So basically, what I want to talk about is, you know, Olivia and Kai, I was very intentional, especially with Olivia, because she was such a well-rounded and advanced whatever student, that I knew she would qualify for a lot of scholarships, right? But what are the, what scholarships? So we went on a hunt for those scholarships. And then the biggest batch of money, aside from, I mean, she did get five thousand dollars this year as the winner, but as you know, West Orange Scholarship Fund is just a huge allotment of money. The problem for me and her, and I think other kids and parents, is that it's a general application, which is great and easy. However, you don't have the qualifications that are needed for all of the different scholarships available. So if you read through and you say, hey, I am a special ed student that takes auto courses, right, and there's a scholarship just for me, I'm going to write my essay, right, towards that, so I might be a better candidate. Or, I mean, there's so many of them, and I think that if they had all of those requirements for those scholarships ahead of time, and they could kind of build towards that and know what they're going to apply for and try to get, I think we would see a few less disappointed kids at that ceremony who only come and get pieces of paper in the beginning, right? They think they're still up for a scholarship, and they get nothing. At least they would have seen all the requirements, and hopefully, like, I would tell my kid, I'm like, there's no way you're going to get that, right? So at least they're clear. So that's one recommendation. The other thing that we were struggling with is how you guys come up with the top ten of the graduating class, right? I wrote to you. I was dealing with top five percent, top ten percent. That's how I knew kids were being measured. I was really surprised when I saw that post that it was, oh, no, these top ten kids. And even at the graduation, these are the top ten kids in the class. Well, how do you get to be that top ten, right? Is it the difference between deciding to take one more AP class your junior year? Could that, could that have been the difference to get into the top ten? And that relates to money, right? It relates to what these kids are able to get out in the larger world, and it matters. So what we're asking for and what we are prepared to partner with as well is Maritza's program, it goes through with these kids from first to graduation. I mean, we will cover these things with the parents, with the kids, because it's financial as well. It's not just academic. It directly impacts my pocket. I have enough checks there to pay for one payment of her college, right, because we were targeted. Could we have done better if we knew some more information? Or sure. She might have lost her, what you call that, study break? But yeah, I think that's what we're looking for, a list, more transparency into how to become one of those top ten, how to become the top five percent, top ten percent, right? When are the points accumulated? So you know, do you have to try really, really hard sophomore year? What matters, right? So if we could get something like that, that we can share with our parents, and I think really it should be transparent to everybody. It should be something that you can look up and make a plan with your kid for their high school career, because that's what people are doing now. I mean, it's a lot of money to go to school, and the more money we can get and plan for, the better it's going to be. So that's it, right?
So now, one of the options that we have considered is, in addition to sharing the information, delegate someone to come and present. We meet every third Saturday of the month, beginning in December. We have orientation this year, beginning September and October. So we're seeking to provide the transparency straight through, so that any student is aware of how we can better help them for the future and how we can converge as a group.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you.
Did the board have any questions before they go? I appreciate you coming to share about this. I think Mr. Moore will, you know, take this back. And the other thing I wanted to mention in my board president's report is just a shout out to Mr. Felix Plata and the West Orange Hispanic Foundation, was at the Latin night that we hosted, or they hosted out on the football field last Saturday, the thirteenth, maybe. It was hot during the day. I showed up in the evening when the sun was going down. Mr. Moore was there sweating all day, I think. But it was a great event. Looked like everybody had a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun when we got there. So again, just shout out to Mr. Felix Plata and his team for organizing that. And I'd also like to just acknowledge and give a shout out to Mr. Moore for completing his first full year as superintendent officially.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys. I feel like I've been acknowledged all year, though. I thank you.
When you got a good thing, let them know every day. And we've got four more years to let you know, and hopefully a few more after that. All right, so with that, we will move on to our business for the evening. Actually, sorry, before that, we'll have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record, then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment? Seeing none, now we'll move on to our business agenda and our resolutions. First, may I have a motion to approve the personnel items A one through A seven?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. I want to congratulate the following retirees. Kevin Alveen, Supervisor of Phys Ed and Health at West Orange High School for his thirty-five years of service, and Gerard Narcissa, a night shift custodian at West Orange High School for his thirty-one years of service. Thank you both for your service to the West Orange students and our school community, and welcome to the club where every day is Saturday. Is there any discussion of personnel? No, seeing none. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items B one through B three?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, may I have a motion to approve the finance items C, Special Services Item A one through three, and Business Office Items B one through fifteen?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, finally, may I have a motion to approve reports, items D one through D three?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you to my board colleagues for that. Next up, we will have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda item that you wish to discuss. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, that will close public comments. Uh, thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be held at six thirty P M on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library and Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.